You're listening to the anointed sounds of Bobby Beautiful Music. Release your musical tracks today. You're listening to the anointed sounds of Bobby Beautiful Music. Release your musical tracks today. Welcome to the journey.
Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to tonight's Bible study of the beautiful, beautiful book of Numbers. And we'll be reviewing Numbers chapters 22, 23, 24, as Brother Linden takes us to Numbers chapters 25 and 26. And without further delay, without further ado, Brother Linden is going to pray tonight's session in for us. And we would just like to, Brother Linden just asks you to please keep in mind Paul Lake's mother, her name is Gail, and keep in mind Sister Margaret's mother, Sister Tate as well. And beloved brethren, just for the record, if there's any ones that you would like for us to pray for, any of your loved ones, please send it to me in a text. If you can send it now, I'll try to get that in. But if not, just send it to me still and we'll pray for your loved ones at the end of Bible study. So with that in mind, Brother Linden, can you please open up tonight's study by taking us to the throne of mercy?
Okay, Heavenly Father, we want your presence. We never knew the seriousness of being stripped naked from your presence. Without you, there's no everlasting joy. There's no everlasting peace. There's no everlasting love. As you listen to us, please hear our requests on behalf of its mother and Paul's mother. And I will include my mother as well. You know, my mother is receiving dialysis treatments and I know Sister Margaret's mother needs to be looked upon as well as Paul's mother. So lift them up, comfort them, and heal them. We earnestly ask you because of our longing to see them okay, to see them well. As for right, may your presence envelope us. Let us know that our shameful desires, our deceitful and shameful desires cannot hold us anymore. You will be our only desire, our only treasure. Again, thank you for your attentive ears. Thank you for reassuring us your presence through your timing. Continue to bless each and every individual here. I pray that each and every individual has a healing eyes to see. See this because you are wonderful Father. In the name of your son, Yeshua Ha'avis, in the name of your Holy Spirit. Thank you Father, amen.
Amen. Thank you baby brother. Okay beloved ones, once again, we are enjoying these beautiful studies as found in the book of Numbers chapters 22, 23, 24, 25, and 26. With you something that was shared with me on how wonderful and how marvelous God's spirit is. If I may be allowed to say so, I would like to share with you this beautiful story that this sister shared with me. I used to be an accessory driver. And on one New Year's Eve, I picked up a sister to take to church to pray the whole year out and pray New Year in. That's a tradition that my family, we practice as well. So as I pulled up to pick her up, just really quick beloved, just really quick, as Brother Linden and I tell you all the time, that here in this wilderness that we're in, God scores, and I mean scores of faithful ministries throughout our neighborhood, throughout our area, throughout our region, throughout our nation, throughout the world. Beloved, find one. Find a faithful church. Find a faithful congregation of believers and enjoy yourself to them. And as Brother Linden and I always encourage you, just make sure that they, and I'm going to steal a line from Linden, make sure that they stick to the script. Make sure that their teaching of you or teaching is found in what does say of the word of our Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. So as she was preparing to get on the bus, her son was standing next to her. And he was drunk. He must have drunk every alcoholic beverage that New York must have held. And she was trying to get him to go to church with her. So she says to me, "Drive, is it okay if my son can come?" And I said, "Absolutely." But he refused to get on the bus and come with his mother to church. So as we were riding to church, she began to tell me this story. And boy, what a story it was. She said that she years ago used to be an alcoholic, she used to use drugs, and she was just a whole nine. You know, one of my favorite lines to y'all is sex, drugs, and rock and roll. Well, she engaged in two out of three. And rock and roll was one of them that she eliminated. She told me that she used to, for a better choice of word, she used to be a streetwalker. And just, you know, trading her body for money so she can use drugs and so on and so forth. So she told me that she had came upon this one guy and she made a proposition to him. So he invited her, you know, to come into her car and so on and so forth. She says to me, now this is her telling me the story. She said that she got in the car and when she closed the door, I'm laughing, not at her, I'm just laughing that she just felt so comfortable that she had a story with me. She said that she got in the car and shut the door for them to take off. She said that he said, "You stink." And I mean, she just, she said he read her the riot act. She said, she just said, she said that he said, "You smell like something awful. How dare you get in my car to make a proposal to me of such a nature." So she was embarrassed and she got out. And she said, it was actually early Sunday morning that, you know, this has happened. So she stumbled her way into a church. Just went to the back of the church and just sat there. Fell asleep, actually, she said she fell asleep. But she said, oddly enough, she started going to that church in the same condition, you know, coming out from spending Saturday nights and not too good of a condition. And she said she went to that church again and again. She said, one Sunday, the pastor approached her with one of the sisters and asked her that she need to take a shower and, you know, change her clothes and all that. Lo and behold, she did. She accepted the shower. She accepted the clothes that some of the sisters had actually bought for her and what have you. So that led up to her being converted. She put away that God, this lifestyle. It's just elated. Know that God reaches down and he takes the worst of us. Because beloved, let me share with you something. All of us are at our worst. Scripture says, "For all have come short of the glory of God; for all have sinned." So I don't care if we're dressed to the nigh, or I don't care if we're sleeping in the street. All of us in the eyes of God are just sinners. Hell, dooms, sinners on our eternity. As God marvelously saved her, God marvelously saved Brother Linden, God marvelously saved me, and God can marvelously save you as well as your loved ones. So beloved, please. You know, my wife, my wife said to me one time, she said, "Oh," this is during one of our studies, she said, "What happened that you broke down?" I said, "I don't know babe." She said, "Well, did you eat that day?" I said, "No." She said, "That was, that's, that what was wrong with you. That's why you was crying because you didn't eat." Well, I ate today and I have to tell you that I'm just filled with overflowing tears because we serve the mighty, awesome God. And he is just, he's, he's, he's just, he's just awesome. He's just too awesome for us to even reckon with. David as well as Nehemiah, they say that God is so awesome that they address him as terrible. Now, not terrible in the sense that we know the word terrible, but listen to what Nehemiah the awesomeness of the God you. Chapter 9 verse 32. "Now therefore, O God," excuse me, "now therefore, our God, the great, the mighty, the terrible God, who keeps covenant and mercy, let not all the trouble seem little before thee that hath come upon us, on our kings, on our princes, and on our priests, on our prophets, and on our fathers, and all thy people since the time of the kings of Assyria until today." I address God as a terrible God, but he addressed all those who live. He is the one I am God. When because he is so that I can be with you all tonight. The most and wonderful and awesome and mighty God we have. Our Most High God is terrible. A great king over all the earth. And it is my honor, it is my privilege, aside from being my duty, to serve him along with you beloved brothers, along with you beloved sisters, and with you beautiful, beautiful, lovely ones. Numbers chapters 22, 23, and 24 in review. Beloved, we Christians, we're hated because we're feared. King Balak, he came upon the children of Israel. And listen to what he says and how he feels about them as we read Numbers chapters 22 verses 1 through 6. "And the children of Israel set forward and pitched in the plains of Moab, on this side Jordan by Jericho. And Balak, the sinner, and Balak, the son of Zippor, saw all that Israel had done to the Amorites. And Moab was so afraid of the people because they were many. And Moab was distressed because of the children of Israel. And Moab said unto the elders of Midian, 'Now, saith this company, lick us up that are rescued.' Now, saith this company, lick up all that are round about us as I'll lick up the grass of the field. And Balak, the son of Zippor, was king of the Moabites at that time. And he sent messengers unto Balam, the son of Beor, which is by the river of the land of the children of his people, called him, saying, Behold, there is a people that comes out of Egypt. They cover the face of the earth; they abide over against me. Come now therefore, I pray thee, curse me, this people, for they are too mighty for me. Perhaps I shall prevail that we may smite them and that we may drive them out of the land. For I know, for I know that whom you bless is blessed, and whom you curse, they are cursed." Beloved, with that backdrop, please understand that as the children of Israel were hated back then and they did nothing to Balak or to the Moabites, we as Christians, we are hated because we are feared because of whom we belong to. And he to whom we belong is God Almighty. And since he requires a challenge, a change in the lives of men, people do not want to hear from you or I. Beloved, understand that when we're in the presence of people, their spirit can detect and discern our spirit. And they hate us with a hatred that is absolutely incredible. You can readily identify with the children of Israel as you are a Christian with the world around you as did with that king Balak. Now, beloved, please understand this, the hatred that you are, that is upon you, this hatred for you got its origin in heaven itself. And this comes from the rebellion of Satan and his demons. Listen to Revelation chapter 12 verses 72 to 9. Revelation chapter 12 verses 72 to 9 reads as follows. "There was war in heaven. Michael, that is Jesus, and his angels fought against the dragon, and the dragon fought and his angels, and prevailed not. Neither was there a place found any more in heaven. And the great dragon, which was Satan, was cast out, that serpent, called the devils, who deceived the whole world. He was cast out into the earth, and his angels were cast out with him." So again, beloved brethren, the hatred that you and I experience as Christians, this is satanic in origin. I told y'all before, as an accessory driver, I picked up this client, all of the passengers are called clients. I picked up a client and as I was putting her, you know, helping her into the car, she was like, "Oh, oh, you're such a nice young man. Oh my gosh, there need to be more people like you. You're so lovely." And just, oh, she was singing my praises as if I was the president of the United States. "Oh, you're so lovely. Oh, you gotta tell me your company and you gotta give me the name of your your company, the phone number, because I gotta call and tell them they have such an awesome employee." I said, "Thank you, thank you, and thank you again." So after we get in the car and get settled and everything, I put on my Christian radio, but I put it on at a volume that was, what's it would say? How could I say? It wasn't overbearing. I put it at a very low and soothing volume, but she was able to hear it. She goes, "What is that? What is that you're playing?" I said, "Oh, I'm playing Christian radio." "Oh, can you turn that?" And she busts out with a cuss word, then off. And I was shocked. So I turned it down. She then gets on the phone. Now, she's speaking in a foreign language, but in her foreign language, some of the words have to come out of English, such as our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ and curses. And she was doing them both. She was cursing our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, but like I said, she couldn't mask it in her language. So again, beloved, this woman who thought I was the cat's meow in her eyes, when she found out I was a Christian, I turned out to be the most hated thing she had ever, or hated person that she had ever encountered. And she sure enough did call and on me because a few weeks later, my boss, he calls me to office and he goes, "Scott, do you remember picking up so and so?" And I said, "Yeah, I remember." He said, "Well, she called and complained about you." And he goes, "Scott, I know what kind of person we are. You're a God fearing and godly man. But just in the future, if you ever have a client and you wanna play your Christian radio, please just refrain from doing it." He said, "I have no, you know, further words or anything in a disparaging manner against you." So again, beloved, that which happened 4,000 years ago during the Exodus or the wilderness march of the children of Israel, we are experiencing that here in the 21st century. It's very real. It's very true. Beloved, when persons say that the Bible is full of hocus pocus and fairy tales and all that, no, 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 no. The Bible is real, real, and real some more. Because like I just told you, the hatred that Balak had for the children of Israel, I experienced here in the 21st century. Verse 5, now we're talking about the error of Balam. Beloved, Balam is a rather unique person introduced into Scripture. He's almost shrouded in mystery until we move further through the pages of Scripture. Now, just wanna read a little bit about Balam. And as, as we're gonna read a little bit about him, Balam kinda leaves a person. I don't wanna give too much of the story, but I gotta give you a certain backdrop. Balam leaves a person scratching his head and almost gonna say that he's a godly man. Listen once again to Numbers chapter 22 verse 5 as we're introduced to Balam again. "Balak sent messengers unto Balam, the son of Beor, which is by the river of the land of the children of his people, called him, saying, Behold, there is a people that comes out of Egypt. They cover the face of the earth; they abide against me." Verse 6, "Come now therefore, I pray thee, curse me, these people, for they are too mighty for me. Perhaps I shall prevail that we might smite them and that I might drive them out of the land. For I know that whom you bless is blessed, and whom you curse is cursed." And the elders of Moab, verse 7, "And the elders of Midian were departed with the rewards of divination in their hand, and they came unto Balam, and spake unto him the words of Balak. And said unto him, 'Lodge here this night, and I will bring you,'" now this is Balam speaking, B-A-L-A-A-M. This is Balam speaking at the order of King Balak, B-A-L-A-K, to curse the children of Israel. "And Balak said unto them, 'Lodge here this night, and I will bring you word again, as the Lord shall speak unto thee.' And the princes of Moab, they stayed with Balam." Verse 9, "When God came to Balam and said, 'What men are these?' Verse 10, Balam said unto God, 'Balak, the son of Zippor, king of Moab, have sent unto me, saying, Behold, there is a people that comes out of Egypt, which covers the face of the earth. Come now, curse me them; perhaps I shall be able to overcome them and drive them out.'" Now, listen very closely to verse 12. Listen very closely to verse 12. Listen very closely to verse 12. "And God says to Balam, 'You shall not go with them; you shall not curse the people, for they are blessed.'" 13, "Balam rose up in the morning and said unto the priests of Balak, 'Get you unto your land, for the Lord refuses to give me leave to go with you.'" Okay. Scripture says, "God is not a man that he should change his mind, nor the son of man that he should repent." Verse 12, God clearly told Balam, "Don't go. Do not curse the children of Israel, for they are a people that is blessed." As we move, and you have to forgive me for doing this little dance because I'm doing this so again, we can get a backdrop on this mysterious figure called Balam. Well, just listen to verse 22 of Numbers chapter 22. Verse 22 reads as follows. Let me start at 20. "And God came unto Balam at night, and said unto him, 'If the men come to call thee, rise up and go with them; but the word with that shall say unto you, that shall you do.'" Balam rose up in the morning, saddled his ass, and went with the princes of Moab, verse 22. "And God's anger was kindled because he went. And the angel of the lord stood in the way for an adversary against Balam. Now he was riding upon his ass and his two servants with him." Okay. Let's, 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 let's just take a pause right here. Now, once again, like I said, if we were gonna stay in Numbers chapter 22, we would be kinda confused as to who this character Balam is. But again, you gotta move through Scripture. I mean, you've gotta move through Scripture to get a backdrop of Mr. Balam here. Listen to Jude chapter 1 verse 11. Once again, Jude chapter 1 verse 11, and beloved, again, these are being recorded. They are available for you on YouTube. Also Brother Linden, he gathers the Scriptures, he forwards the Scriptures to me, and then I in turn send them out to you. So if you're following along, if you happen to miss a verse or two, worry not, you'll have it in your eternal possession. Jude chapter 1 verse 11. "Go unto them, for they have gone in the way of Cain, and ran greedily after the error of Balam for reward, and perished in the gainsaying of Korah." Listen to 2 Peter chapter 2 verses 14 through 16. "Have an eyes full of adultery, and cannot stop from sinning; beguiling unstable souls, hearts that have exercised with covetous practices; hurts of children, which have forsaken the right way and have gone astray, following the way of Balam, the son of Bolshoi, who loved the wages of unrighteousness, but was rebuked for his iniquity; the dumb ass speaking with man's voice forbade the madness of the prophet." Listen to Deuteronomy chapter 23 verses 3 through 5. "An ammonite or morbite shall not enter to the congregation of the Lord, even to their tenth generation; shall they not enter to the congregation of the Lord forever; because they met you not with bread and with water in the way, when you came out of Egypt, and because they hied against thee, Balam, the son of Beor, of Pethor, of Mesopotamia, to curse you. Nevertheless, the Lord thy God would not listen unto Balam; but the Lord thy God turned the curse into a blessing unto thee, because the Lord thy God loves you." Joshua 13 22. "Balam, also the son of Beor, the soothsayer, did the children of Israel kill with the sword among them that were slain by them." Beloved, really fast, turn in your Bibles to Numbers chapter 31 verse 8. Once again, Numbers chapter 31 verse 8, and we're going to look at the end of Balam. Numbers chapter 31 verse 8 reads as follows. "And they slew the kings of Midian beside the rest of them that were slain, namely And they slew the kings of Midian, beside the rest of them that were slain, namely Evey, Reckham, Zur, Per, Gubba, five kings of Midian. Balaam, also the son of Beor, they slew with the sword. Revelation, chapter 2, verses 13 through 16. I know thy works, and where thou dwellest, even where Satan's seat is, and you hold fast my name, and you have not denied my faith, even in those days where an antipas was my faithful martyr, who was slain among you, where Satan dwells. But I have a few things against you, because you have spared in your midst, excuse me, but you have, but I, a verse 14 of Revelation, chapter 2, please forgive me. But I have a few things against thee, because you have spared them that hold the doctrine of Balaam, who taught Balak to cast a stumbling block before the children of Israel, to eat things sacrificed unto idols and to commit fornication. Okay. Beloved, as scripture reveals, Balaam was not God's man. Now listen. God told Balaam in Numbers, chapter 22, verse 12, not to go. He told them not to go. He told him not to go. Balaam, in his heart, wanted to go, wanted to do the very thing that King Balak hired him to do. He wanted to curse the children of Israel for financial profit, for financial gain. Beloved, throughout the years, you wonder why certain ministries or churches or pastors, they seem to prosper. And you know beyond a shadow of a doubt, I'm talking about the Reverend Ices, and the Joel Osteen's, and the Keflo Dallas, and the TV Jakes, and the Robinsons, and many others throughout the history of the world, why it seem like they have God's backing? Because we, we just read in Numbers, chapter 22, verse 22, that after God told Balaam not to go, God then told Balaam to go. Whoa, 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 Houston, we have a problem, because we seem to have a contradiction. First God tells him not to do it, then God tells him to do. Beloved, the very beginning, Genesis, chapter 2. Listen to what God told Adam and Eve. We're looking at Genesis, chapter 2, verses 16 and 17. And the Lord God commanded a man, saying, of every tree of the garden thou mayest freely eat; but of the tree of the knowledge of good and evil, you shall not eat of it, for on the day that you eat thereof, you shall surely die. When we move to Genesis, chapter 3, we see that Adam and Eve are eating it. Okay, now you gotta understand that Adam and Eve was in full view of God when they went forth to eat the tree. So in a sense, God gave them the green light, may I say, to partake of that tree. So now, wait a minute, brother Scott, what if God going to tell us not to do something? And then make, let's just say allowances, provisions, for us to do that which he told us not to do? Isn't that contradictory? Well, let me share this with you really quick, to again, help to get us a greater understanding of what's, what, 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 what transaction is going on here. The other day, as I was um, doing what's called my sweep, as the conductor, um, once you close the doors, we make every, you make sure that everything is, is uh, cool, kosher, cook aesthetic, there's no blockages, there's no one by the train. So once you close the doors and give the um, train operator the um, indication, he can go in ahead and take off. So I did just that. There was a mother and a little infant son walking down the platform. Now she's holding on to him. And he's trying to pull away from her. He's trying to pull away from her. Now, if you want to read that whole scenario, you could say that she was pretty much saying to him, don't get too close to the train. No, you can't go, because he insisted on trying to get close to the train. And the mother's pulling him, and she's pretty much saying, don't get close to the train. Now, if she would have been fed up with his persistence, she would have let him go and said, in a sense, go ahead, since you want to get to that train so bad, go ahead. Beloved, Balaam wanted that money, and he wanted that money bad. So God told Balaam, no, not to go, but Balaam insisted on going. So then since Balaam insisted on going, what did God tell Balaam in verse 22? Go ahead and go with them. Beloved, we have not a contradiction, because as we just read in Numbers, chapter 31, verse 8, the children of Israel killed Balaam. The children of Israel, they killed Balaam. So when God told Balaam no, in verse 12, his no meant no, all the way through the rest of Balaam's life. But then why would God allow Balaam, or better yet, why would he tell Balaam to go after he told him no? Remember, Brother Linden was speaking about this last week. We are free will agents. In other words, God has not created robots. And by the way, any robots or any androids or anything in that sense, it's all but a man, because man wants to create things that he can control. God did not create us to control us, because if God did create us to control us, everyone would be good. Everyone would be good. So when God created us, he gave us free will. When he told us to do something, we were expected to do it, and when he told us not to do it, we were expected not to do it. So when God told Balaam, don't go, he did not put a barbed wire fence, he did not put Balaam in jail, he did not put Balaam in handcuffs, he did not wrestle Balaam down to the ground and said, don't go. God gave Balaam the desire of his heart. Psalm helps us to appreciate, and we went over this last week, that God gave them their requests, this is the children of Israel, but he sent leniency unto their souls. So when God tells us not to do something, he means it first, foremost, and final. Let me just address this real quick. When God said in Genesis, chapter 19, that homosexuality was a no-no, he meant it then. He meant it the same in Romans, chapter 1, and he meant it, he means it here today, in the 21st century. And let me take you one better. He'll mean it throughout all of eternity. But if you insist on doing what you want to do, when you want to do it, and how you want to do it, God will, for the most part, say, go ahead. In 1 Kings, God told Elijah to tell King Ahab that he was going to die. Elijah told King Ahab those very words, that he was going to die. Ahab chose not to believe. We're now taking to a scene in 1 King, a scene in 1 Kings, chapter 22, where we're in the throne room of King Ahab, and along with him is King Jehoshaphat. There are four hundred false prophets of Ahab telling King Ahab to go up to Ramasgiliad because um, to battle, and the victory would be his. Jehoshaphat said, wait, 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 wait. Yo, Ahab, and I'm paraphrasing, don't you have someone else that will tell us, uh, bring us a word from God? It's four hundred prophets, which they weren't bringing the word of God, but Jehoshaphat was saying, don't we have someone that'll bring us some word? Ahab says, yes, his name is Micahia, but I hate him because he doesn't say anything good about me. And remember, a few chapters earlier, Elijah told Ahab that he was going to get killed. So they bring out Micahia. Now, Micahia is a man of God. The words that Micahia is bringing are from God, not from Micahia. So they say to Micahia, Micahia, should we go up to Ramasgiliad and battle? Micahia says to Ahab, go up, for the battle will be yours. Ahab then says, you're a liar. He says to Jehoshaphat, he's lying. Because anything he says about me is not good. So remember, Ahab was warned that if he goes to battle, he's Micahia tells Ahab to go on up to the battle. The battle will be yours. Ahab knew that what he was being told by Micahia, about him being killed, was to be true. Now, if you want to say that A, uh, Micahia was being facetious, telling him to go up, then okay, yeah, I'll, I'll accept that. But he was already told that if you go to battle, you're going to get killed. Ahab then decides to come out of his kingly attire and to be dressed down as a peasant. And he said, for the most part, and I'm paraphrasing, I'm gonna go to battle. Now, there was a discussion in heaven, and God said, who can I send to persuade Ahab to go to battle, that he may get killed? Remember what God told Balaam? Don't go. Then God said, do go. You see, if you insist on remaining in your sin, if you insist on doing things your way, if you insist on not listening to or obeying God, God will give you free right. And as a matter of fact, God will encourage you to do that very thing which will destroy you. Proverbs, chapter 16, verse 4, says, God has made all things for himself, yea, even the wicked, for the day of destruction. So in other words, God created Balaam to be killed, destroyed, and sent to hell. That's not fair, brother Scott. That's not fair. Beloved, listen to me. Romans helps us to appreciate that God is the potter, we are the clay. God has supreme authority over each and every one of us to tell us what to do, when to do it, how to do it, point blank, period. But he also, along with that supreme authority, gives us sovereign choice to choose for him or against him. That's the only two choices that people will make in life. You cannot choose a, a middle ground, a gray area, I'm going to be the man in the middle. No. With God, either you're for him, you're against him, you love him, or you hate him, you'll obey him, or you'll disobey him. That's it. That's it. What about those, Scott, who have not yet come to Christ? Absolutely. They have not yet come to Christ. But while they're on their way possibly to Christ, they are out there living for the devil. Let me personalize it. I was out there living for the devil, not listening to what God had to say, come what may. I'm ashamed about what I'm getting ready to say. Lord, have mercy. I'm about, I'm ashamed about what I'm getting ready to say. But when I was out there living in the world, I hated God. Let me, let me repeat that. When I was out there in the world, I hated my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Scripture clearly says, you have to love the one and hate the other. Those of us who love God, we now hate the devil. So again, beloved, you have free choice. You have the option to do whatever you want. 2 Thessalonians says that God will send them a strong delusion, that they will believe a lie, that they might be damned, that they might be destroyed. Romans, chapter 1, verse 32, says, God gives them over to a reprobate mind. All God did with Balaam, in Numbers, chapter 22, he told Balaam not to go, was give Balaam, he even encouraged Balaam to go to his own destruction. Paul says, knowing the terror of the Lord, this is found in 2 Corinthians, knowing the terror of the Lord, we persuade men. Beloved, know this. When it comes to sin, God will tell you, like our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, told you, go and sin no more. But if you insist, if you persist, if you like that little child who that parent was trying to hold on to, if you persist in tearing away from God and going out there doing what you want to do, then God will let you do it. Do not call God unfair. Do not call God unloving. Do not do any of that. Because God will give you exactly what you want, since you do not want to take exactly what he wants for you to have. Please, don't underestimate the God and Father of Abraham, Isaac, Jacob, my Lord and Savior, you, and me. Stop, stop it, and stop. God is not to be played with, beloved. Prior to doing my review, after the follow-up of Linden's last, of Linden's study last week, it never dawned on me the awesomeness of our God. Let me repeat this. When God tells you to stop sinning, and you insist on sinning, God will allow you, and he may even encourage you all to your destruction, all to your being cast into hell. So beloved, please, at the end of tonight's study, please have a different outlook, a different mindset, and a different view on the Almighty God, the Creator of heaven, earth, and the universe. Begging you, begging you, to please see how much we will be in danger, trouble, destruction, awfulness, if we undervalue or take advantage of the grace that God has set forth for you and I. Beloved, verses 20, uh, chapters 22, 23, and 24, pretty much covers this era of Balaam. Remember, God may give you permission to do something, but that does not necessarily mean that's his approval for you doing that which you do. Verses 23 to 35 of Numbers, chapter 22, we have an incident that has happened only once in the history of the world, has never been repeated. And that is Balaam's donkey speaking to him. After the donkey sees, and this is the glorified Lord Jesus Christ, as Brother Linden brought out so beautifully last week. This is the Lord Jesus Christ attempting, and when I use the word attempting, that's attempting, and when I use the word attempting, that's not the failure on Jesus's part, it's not a failure on God's part. The failure goes on the part of Balaam to prevent Ba- uh, Balaam from cursing the children of Israel. God promised Abraham in Genesis, I will bless those that bless you, I will curse those that curse you. Beloved, please understand this. God has exhausted his greatest I don't want to use the word asset, so please, for, for lack of a better word. God is, okay, that's, thank you. God has used his greatest personage throughout all of eternity to redeem us unto himself, and that's our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. But if you refuse the love of God and you spawn the love of, and if you spurn the love of Christ, you are now set forth for eternal destruction if you die in that state. Please, beloved, please do not live and die as such. Balaam was so bent on having his way, he did not even realize that an, uh, 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 a non-vocal animal was talking to him. But Balaam is actually carrying on a conversation with him. Listen to Numbers, chapter twenty-two, verses twenty-three, starting. But the angel of the Lord stood in the path, excuse me, the ass saw the angel of the Lord standing in the way, and his sword drawn in his hand. The ass turned out of the way and went into the field, and Balaam smote the ass to turn her into the way. But the angel of the Lord, the path of the vengeance, and the wall being on this side and on that side. And when the ass saw the angel of the Lord, she thrust herself against the wall and crushed Balaam's foot. And he hit her again. And the angel of the Lord went further and stood in a narrow place where there was nowhere to turn, either to the left hand or to the right. And when the ass saw the angel of the Lord, she fell down on the Balaam, and Balaam's anger was kindled, and he smote the ass with a staff. Now, just again, real quick, real quick, real quick. We see that Jesus is trying, 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 trying and trying again to get Balaam to change his course. Course. Beloved, how many times do you want Jesus to stop you from sinning? How many times does he want you to give your car a flat tire? How many times does he want your car to run out of gas? How many times does he want you to swipe your ATM and there's no money in there? How many times as you get ready to go out the door, you step in some glass and you cut your foot? How many times would the dog grab you by your coattail and try to keep you in the house? How many times would you go out there and see that your car was stolen? How many times would somebody come up to you and, and rob you? Do all of this to keep you from going out there sinning? Do you want him to do it everlastingly? I don't think so. Because he sent you enough warnings to keep you from sinning. Just on sinning, God will let you do it. If you insist on sinning, God will let you do it. Beloved, this, 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 there's just so much that I would like to address in this connection, but for the sake of time, I'm not able to. But beloved, please, please understand. God has done all that he can as a supreme being to keep you out of harm's way. And like I said before, God treats us with respect, and he respects our ability or our right to choose for him or against him. Just don't call him unfair when he gives you what you want but to the destruction of your own soul. Verse twenty-eight, the Lord opened the mouth of the ass, and she said unto Balaam, what have I done to you that you've hit me these three times? And Balaam said to the ass, because you have mocked me, I wish that I had a sword in my hand, for I would kill you. And the ass said to Balaam, am not I, a- am I not your ass upon which you have ridden ever since I was with thee unto this day? And did I ever do anything like this against you? And Balaam said, no. Verse thirty-one, God opens the eyes of Balaam, and Balaam sees the angel of the Lord, which we identified as our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. So here, Balaam is kicking his car because he got a flat, because he was getting ready to go out there and involve himself in sex, drugs, and rock and roll. Beloved, know this, and please include this night that God is using eight thirty-seven P M, November second, twenty twenty-four, as one of his reasons to keep you from sinning against him, to keep you and my soul out of hell. Take advantage of it. Bless the Lord for it and say, Almighty God, I am thankful that you have ex- eh, exercised such measures to keep me out of the pits of hell. Beloved, as we're bringing our review to a close, just moving very quickly over to chapter twenty-four, verse seventeen through twenty-four, and I would like to read that. We move now over to Numbers, chapter twenty-four, verses seventeen through twenty-four. Starting at verses fifteen. And he took up this parable and said, Balaam, the son of B R, have said, and the man whose God, whose eyes God opened, has said, he hath said, which he heard the words of God and knew the knowledge of the Most High, which saw the vision of the Almighty, falling into a trance, but having his eyes open. I shall see him, but not now. I shall behold him, but not near. There shall come a star out of Jacob, and a shepherd shall rise out of Israel, and shall smite the corner of Moab and destroy all the children of Shep. And Edom shall be a possession, Shear also shall be a possession for his enemies. And Israel shall do valiantly. Out of Jacob shall come he that shall have dominion, and shall destroy him that remaineth of the city. Beloved, as Brother Lyndon once again alluded to last week, this speaks of our Lord, our Savior, Jesus Christ. Listen to Luke, chapter one, verse seventy-eight. Luke, chapter one, verse seventy-eight, reads as follows. Through the tender mercy of our God, whereby the day sprang, that's Jesus, from on high has visited us. Genesis, chapter forty-nine, verses ten and eleven. The shepherd shall not depart from Judah, nor a lord given from between his feet, until Shiloh come, and unto him, Shiloh speaks of Jesus. And unto him shall the gathering of the people be, binding his foe unto the vine, and his ass's coat unto the choice fine. He washed his garments in wine, and his bloods, excuse me, and his clothes in the blood of grapes. Beloved, this speaks of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Now, when Balaam made the, the prophecy that he will see Jesus, that is in harmony with what's found in scripture. Every knee will bow, and every tongue will confess the Lord Jesus Christ. Now, when Balaam said that he will see him, but not come near, remember, scripture helps us to appreciate that the Lord is near unto them. The Lord is near unto all that call upon him. That's why Balaam, that he will see him, but he will not come near. Verse seventeen of Numbers, chapter twenty-four, I'll read it again. I shall see him, but not now. I shall behold him, but not near. Balaam will not be allowed to come near to the Lord Jesus Christ, the nearness in the sense of having sweet fellowship, as Brother Lyndon helps us to appreciate over and over again, sweet fellowship and sweet communion with Jesus, because Balaam is not one of God's own. So again, beloved brethren, please understand that when God says no, his no is forever. He will not change his mind. When God told Jonah to go to the land of Nineveh, and Jonah said, no, God did not change his mind because Jonah changed his direction. When God tells a homosexual not to commit such acts, I don't care if we get down to the twenty-first century, uh, twenty-first century, and Obama said it's okay. God said it's not okay. Beloved, again, when God tells you no, is no, is no of eternity, is yes for all of eternity. Brother Lyndon.
Okay, everybody, um, it's beautiful to know. And I, 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 I will say this again. God has sovereign choice. And we have read from Romans, chapter nine, that even before they were born, it's not based on any works they've done, it's based on the purpose and election. But we must understand, though, even though we cannot save ourselves, I always mentioned this, I mentioned this last week. Doesn't negate the fact that God knows everything about you before or you're formed. And to encourage everybody. When you see yourself calling and praying and calling and calling God, drawing you, repentance is a gift from God. So that's why we thirst. That's why we commune with each other, and that's why we enjoy sweet fellowship with one another, and we enjoy community. And then we'll see that he will help us conquer every mountain, every giant, every desire that sneer to death. Because the devil's parade is, they don't love you for you, they just love you for all the blessings you give. See, I can give them those blessings. They can have their car, they can have their house. They love beauty and possessions and pleasure. They don't want you. God owes the hearts. And it's unfortunate that we have been separated from him and we do. But God perceives who we are going to be even before we are born. And, uh, I wanted to just go to a few scriptures before I embark in our journey through the chapters of Numbers. And, uh, it's in Genesis, chapter sixteen. I, I, I love to this, these verses because the angel of the Lord predicted to Hagar what her son was going to be like while she was pregnant with him. If you go to Genesis, chapter sixteen, verse eleven, the angel of the Lord also said to her, you are now pregnant, and you will give birth to a son. You shall name him Ishmael, for the Lord has heard of your misery. He will be a wild donkey of a man. His hand will be against everyone, and everyone's hand against him. And he will live in hostility toward all his brothers. This mystery, this mysterious sovereign choice of God's purpose and election is bailed to us. And I know for me, I know it keeps me humble. I want to make sure of my calling and election. Hello? So, um, that's why we have to really focus on We dial us. Um, doing God's will. And I know it's not easy, but it's worth it to encourage us all. When we go to first John, chapter four, verse nineteen, it clearly says, we didn't first love God. We don't need no saving. We'll go to first John, chapter four, verse nineteen. It is written, we love because he first loved us. I'll leave right there. We love because he first loved us. And then when we go to Titus, it shows God's mercy. And this should give you deeper insight. This is Titus, verse three, through four, um, through four. At one time, we too were foolish, disobedient, deceived, and enslaved by all kinds of passions and pleasures. We lived in malice and envy, being in one another. But when the kindness and love of God, our Savior, came, he saved us, not because of righteous things we had done, his mercy. When you have received encounters from God, rest assured, he's giving you an assignment. You're going to be commissioned to do work. Period. We vessels are being used by God to encourage other vessels. You see, we not doing this because of of our talents or our physical abilities. This all surpassing wonderful power is from God. There is treasure, which is God in you, the whole Jesus Christ. So let's go to, um, Numbers, chapter twenty-five. People may say, wow, you mean to tell me God is telling me who to marry? And who I can't marry? Why is that so important? Is that relevant to this day? I mean, if we agreed with the, the world's culture, modern-day society's culture, we'll say, God loves everybody. Yeah, someone who's not in, who's in light, yeah, they can, they can admire somebody in the darkness. God loves everybody. You know, if you marry somebody who's in darkness, then maybe you can convince that person to come along and, and join you in worship. Give one moment as I turn to Numbers, chapter twenty-five. Now, we see that the Moabites, Balak, wanted to curse the children of Israel because of fear. Now we see Mo- Moab seduce Israel through another way. And we, we see this. We see Satan bringing a barrage of attacks on the church from outside. And he weaves in and causes a cancer from the inside of the church. Very clever, very subtle. And that's why we need to be armored in God's presence, so we will not be unaware of the enemy's plots and schemes. I wasn't gonna go there. As usual. This comes to mind when we go to Ephesians, chapter six. And then we'll, we'll be. Ephesians, chapter six. This is highly quoted armor of God. And, uh, just bear with me as I get there. We have to be armored in the presence of God. Why? I'll read it. It is written, Ephesians, chapter six, verse ten. Finally, be strong in the Lord and in his mighty power. Put on the full army of God, put, put on the full armor of God, so that you can take your stand against the devil's schemes. And people think it's like physical armor. No, we, how, how do we armor ourselves? We armor ourselves by forgiving those. Cause we're not on that, where the schemes. Sometimes we have to cast out members, so the enemy. And destroy their flesh. It's a way of protecting community. Of leaders. And, um. I'm gonna show you what this seduction is all about. And people may think, oh, God's cruel and. God wants to kill all women who are seductive, especially the ones who do not worship God. Now we see this very day and age. Everybody has their own opinion. Everybody has their own, uh, agenda and there's no solid ground. Nobody even knows what's right from wrong anymore. Okay, so just bear with me and I'm gonna read Numbers. Uh, I'm going to read Numbers, chapter twenty-five for you. Just give me one moment. While Israel was. The men began to indulge in sexual morality with Moabite women. Who invited them to the sacrifices to their gods. The people ate the sacrificial meal and bowed down before these gods. And these gods are demons. They're sculptures in disguise. So themselves to the bail of Hore. And the Lord's anger burned against them. Sexual morality. What is sexual morality? Well, we know homosexuality, but we also have to stress on fornication. And the seriousness of fornication is, and I'm guilty of it. When we fornicate, we become one with that person. That's what it's meant to be. And we sin against our own body. So if you can turn to first Corinthians, chapter six, verse thirteen through eighteen. It is written. The body, however, is not meant for sexual morality, but for the Lord and the Lord for the body. By his power, God raised the Lord from the dead, and he will raise us also. Do you not know that your bodies are members of Christ himself? So I then take the members of Christ, the body, and unite them with a prostitute? Never. Do you not know that he who unites himself with a prostitute is one with her in body? For it is said, the two will become one flesh. But whoever is united with the Lord is one with him in spirit. Flee from sexual immorality. Just the way that Adam took the forbidden fruit with Eve is the same concept. When you sleep with somebody who's promiscuous, you're one with her. And now all of a sudden, when you lie with her. Hey, I'm gonna go to church or I feel like, I ain't feel like going to church. You one with the man. If I go to church, she probably don't want to have sex with me anymore. Flee from sexual. Don't let her be a snare, or don't let him be a snare. Be careful. And I, I'm telling you, the enemy is very crafty and all he will do. Is have you. See that he'll, it only produces death. That's what he, he does. He entices you because he wants to destroy you. Please be careful. Just bear with me one more moment. And again, we're gonna go a little. First, first Corinthians, chapter six. First Corinthians, chapter six, verse nine to eleven. Do you not know? That evil duels will not inherit the kingdom of God? Do not be deceived. Neither the sexually immoral, nor idolaters, nor adulterers, nor men who have sex with men, nor thieves, nor the greedy, nor drunkards, nor slanderers, nor swindlers will inherit the kingdom of God. And that is what some of you were. But you were washed. You were sanctified. You were just bought in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ, the Spirit of our God. I remember my first, uh, revelation, I was reading the Bible and I, I wasn't really going to church, but I was in, uh, Governor's site and I was doing overnight and I was reading the scriptures and I know my friend who I worked with in Prudential Securities and One Year Plaza. He became a minister and he and his wife got married. And I'll go to his service every now and then, but you know, I just did that because he was my friend and I was familiar with him. So, uh, I read that scripture. And I, at the time I was living with my wife, who was then my girlfriend. And, uh, my parents would tell me, hey, you should, you should be doing that. That's, that's shacking. Shacking means two unmarried people living together. And so when I read that verse. It, it took me. By surprise, I was like, oh my goodness. I'm sexually immoral. So I called my friend. And he said. To me. Hey, uh, you're calling. And I said, hey, you know, I'm thinking about going to, you know, one of your services. If anybody can, uh, please put a mute on their end, that'll be helpful. And, uh. What I want to address to you is this is God's call on me. I, I, I knew it because. This is the first time I ever experienced confirmation in, in, in his encounter. And I will say this all to you. God will reveal himself for. So through the scripture, don't you know that the sexual immoral will not enter the kingdom of God? So I said, hey, man, I'm thinking about, I'm checking you out, you know? Hey, you always say that, man. You never gonna come. You're not coming through. I said, listen, where's your church? He said Bedford, Bedford Avenue in Brooklyn? He said, yeah. I said, listen, I'll be there. Cause this is like I was doing overnight shift on Saturday. So I said, you know, I, I, I'll come through. As a matter of fact, it was my, it was Sunday overnight. So I said, yeah, I'm gonna go straight. I'm gonna go, you know, go, just go straight from work and then go over there. When I finally got over there. The moment I stepped in his church. His wife was having a Bible study and she was reading, "Do you not know that the sexual immoral will not inherit the kingdom of God?" And I took, I said, what? What did you just say? Now listen. God is my witness. We will have Bible study. And he will say, the finished work of Christ. We need to rest in the finished work of Christ. I'm Apple and I'm just, you know, buying, um, buying some, uh, some, um, gospel songs on, uh, on iTunes. And, and then Jonathan Rick Reynolds sings the same verse almost. He said, I am, I, I. Resting, I'm resting in the finished work of Christ. Every time. Repeated. Through a sermon, through people. Manifesting his presence through his word. That's why we have Bible study. It's not about intellect. It's not about intellectual knowledge. It's about. Intimate knowledge. You get to know your bridegroom. And he will help you understand the beauty of loving him. Who he is. And he will draw you, woo you. You pray to him and you, you receive answered prayers. You start to have an intimacy with him and, and gradually. All the things that you lusted for being put aside. You take a narrow path with him. And then another encounter, I will say to you, it's like when you're going through the scriptures, on my bed, I think of you. I'm, I'm looking for other scriptures and all of a sudden I stumble on this song. I didn't even choose a song. It says the same thing. On my bed, I'm thinking of you. And then I'm like, ah, I'm not looking for, I said, what did I? God manifests his presence to his people. So you should be thankful. When you receive encounters from Yeshua, cause as it's written, "He does not reveal himself, but to the babes." According to Luke, chapter ten, verse ten. I believe it is, but let's make sure. So when you go do your own study. You'll see the beauty and of God manifesting himself. See the Father will reveal the Son and the Son will, will reveal the Father. Uh, just to be exact, I don't want to. But yes, just to, uh, show you the beauty of these scriptures here. Is, yes, it's Luke, chapter ten, verse twenty-one. "I praise you, Father, Lord of heaven and earth, hidden these things from the wise and learned, and revealed them to little children. Yes, Father, for this is what you were pleased to do. All things have been committed to me by my Father. No one knows who the Son is except the Father. No one knows who the Father is except the Son. And those to whom the Son chooses to reveal him." So if you said to yourself, yeah, Abraham was going down a river and he decided to pray to the God of all the heavens and earth. That is a lie. It was God who called him. He was in a family of idol worshippers. And God called him. Even talented from God. Be thankful. Be most thankful. Alright, let's go back to number five. So we see the importance of God. Stressing about sexual morality. Morality can. Lead your heart astray from God. Especially with women who are. Are not believers. And their seduction will bring you to ruin. So the Lord said to Moses, "Take all the leaders of these people, kill them and expose them in broad daylight before the Lord. So that the Lord's fierce anger may turn away from Israel." So Moses said to Israel's judges, "Each of you must be, each of you must put to death those of your people who have yoked themselves to the bail of Hore." Then an Israelite man brought into, so we see Moses telling the leaders to kill and expose all those who are, uh. Were not worshippers of God. Who are worshippers to bail of pure. So annihilate them. Then an Israelite man brought into the camp, a Midianite woman, right before the eyes of Moses and the whole assembly of Israel, while they were weeping at the entrance to the tent of meeting. When Phine, Phinehas. Son of El, Eliezer, the son of Aaron, the priest, saw this. He left the assembly, took a spear in his hand. And filed the Israelite into the tent. He drove the spear into both of them. Right through the Israelite man and into the woman's stomach. Then the plague against the Israelites was stopped. But those who died in the plague numbered twenty-four thousand. The Lord said to Moses, "Phinehas, son of Eliezer, Eliezer, the son of Aaron, the priest, has turned by anger away from the Israelites, since he was as zealous, since he was as zealous for my honor among them as I am. I did not put an end to them in my zeal. Therefore tell him I am making my covenant of peace with him. He and his descendants will have a covenant of a lasting priesthood, because he was zealous for the honor of his God and made a torment for the Israelites. The name of the Israelite who was killed with the Midianite woman was Zimri, son of Salu, the leader of the Semiticite family. And the name of the Midianite woman who was put to death was Cosby. Daughter of Zor. Daughter of Zer, a tribal chief of the Midianite family. The Lord said to Moses, "Treat the Midianites as enemies and kill them." They treated you as enemies when they deceived you in the Hore incident involving their sister Cosby. The daughter of Midianite, daughter of a Midianite leader, the woman who was killed when the plague came as a result of that incident." Wow. That seems so harsh. But look at it for what it is. Right now we're in a land where people don't even know. What sex a person is. There's so much immorality. It's come to the point where when a child is born, they say, don't put sex on, on the birth certificate until that child. Old enough to determine his or her sex. This immorality. Comes from people of light yoking with people of darkness. There's nothing good out of it. It seems very harsh. But if you look at the bigger picture, God sees all things. He sees that it only brings grief anytime there's confusion. In the land. Where people don't even know who to have to marry. We see. That it's a mockery of God. Let's go to first Kings, chapter eleven, verse one through six. We know Solomon. Son of David. Who's considered the wisest man. He asked God for wisdom. And God made him. The, the richest king ever. But here, unfortunately. Was his shortcoming. Just bear with me as I get there. This is a lesson to all of us. As men. Satan will send a lot of decoys in your direction. And when he senses. Someone's anointed. He's going to attack you. Act with fiery darts or spears flying with flames. But through the craftiness and subtle seductive speech. Of women, especially if you're married, but if you're not married. She'll entice you. Now she may think she's doing no harm. But as I was talking with, uh, Eve didn't think she was gonna harm her husband. And she seduced him to disobey God. She had known me. Brought death to her. And, and. So just because they are sincere or not even well aware that they will bring harm doesn't mean they're not bringing harm. And it goes that way, the other way around too. Men can seduce women off the face. Their good looks, their status quo. And. Let's go to first Kings chapter 11, verse one. King Solomon, however, loved many foreign women besides Pharaoh's daughter. Moabites, Ammonites, Ammonites, Sidonians and Hittites. They were from nations about which the Lord had told the Israelites, you must not intermarry with them. Because they will surely tear in your hearts after their gods. Nevertheless, Solomon held fast to them in love. He had seven hundred wives of royal birth and three hundred concubines, and his wives let him astray. As Solomon grew old, his wives turned his heart after other gods, and his heart was not fully devoted to the Lord his God. As the heart of David his father had been. He followed as Doroth, the goddess of the Sidonians. Oleg, the detestable god of the Ammonites. So Solomon did evil in the eyes of the Lord. He did not follow the Lord completely as David his father had done. It's unfortunate. Now you, now you get a clearer picture of why there was decree. To wipe out. You see wiping out women. Moabites, because they will be there to seduce men to have sexual morality. And as we know, when you sin against a body, when you sin, you're sinning against your body. All of the sins are outside of the body, but when it comes to sexual sin, you're sinning against your own body. It only brings death. Trust me, I've experienced it. And, uh, I'm thankful that God delivered me from that. I'm gonna take no credit. But I'm thankful. Let's go to Ezra, chapter 10, verse two, um, two, three. Ezra, chapter 10, verses two, two, three. Ezra's a priest. And, uh, in his prayer. Again, into marriage. With. God, ungodly woman, obviously led men astray. There's no blessing if they have offspring with these women. And I'm gonna tell you again. Uh, I know Brother Scott will always say, hey, this is the new way of expressing himself. But the Old Testament is a foreshadow of, well, you see, we know that God has. Combined the Jew and Gentile to make one. And now God is seeking his people who are scattered among all the nations. So you might say, huh, if God says to them, they can't intermarry, and you see a white man marry a Chinese woman or, uh, an, an Indian woman marrying someone from Africa. You just said that they shouldn't intermarry, but now as we dig deeper, progressive revelation will tell. What does light have to do with darkness? You can have a God-fearing woman from China marry a Canadian God-fearing man. You can have a Puerto Rican God-fearing woman marry a French God-fearing man. Why? Because God has opened the door to the Gentiles. As a result of Israel's disobedience when they did not accept. Shur HaMashik as their Messiah. Sport is written. We have seen unf, we have been unfaithful to our God by marrying foreign women from peoples around us. But in spite of this, there's still hope for Israel. We are the promise, the children of promise. See, not every physical descendant of Israel is Israel. Not every physical descendant, uh, from, from the Gentiles. Is child of God. God looks on the heart, not on the physical stature. Now in this day and age. And God is merciful. God is merciful. But that's, as a believer, that's what we should aim for. Associated with light. Now I'll read that scripture to you. It's in second Corinthians, just to let you know. So I won't leave you out in the dark. Let the word light be a lamp to your feet. I know we've read these verses many times before. But this is what is written. Second Corinthians, chapter six, verse 14. Do not be yoked together with unbelievers. What do righteousness and wickedness have in common? Or what fellowship can light have with darkness? What harmony is there between Christ and Belial? Belial is the devil. Or what does a believer have in common with an unbeliever? What agreement is there between the temple of God and idols? For we are the temple of the living God. As God has said, I will live with them and walk among them, and I will be their God, and they will be my people. Therefore come out from them and be separate. Being separate is again being holy. This is not a matter of you getting a bottle of holy water and disdousing somebody. Oh yeah, you're holy now. Holy means be set apart, be unique, be different like God. Since the world did not know him, the world would not know us. Why? Because we are set apart. Jesus fairly said that to his disciples. The, why? Keep in mind, if the world hated me, they're gonna hate you because I chose you out of the world. For the world loves their own. So if you see that you're being rejected. As Brother Scott mentioned. Young lady, I mean, older lady coming seat of his assessed ride car. And then trying to voice complaints about him. Expressing his faith. Now, if he was raving about Billy Joel, oh. I was gonna cake for her. From the moment he mentioned that name. You can do all healing, you can do all good deeds, but just don't say that name. Don't say that name. You're in a society that's anti-Christ. And we try to sugarcoat it by saying, oh, we'll give them freedom of, of religion. All religions have, should be treated fairly and equally, but they never treat Christianity equally. You can have Muslims praying in school, you can have Muslims, uh, do, and as you can see, another sign is you'll never see anybody impose and say, hey. Go, go to a mosque and say, hey, why aren't you marrying a man, why aren't you now a man to marry a man? That shows you that again, it's a false religion. But the moment when it comes to Christ church. This so-called freedom. Expressing our identity, we have the freedom to express our desire to be a man or vice versa. We determine our identity, not God. But they don't realize the image because marriage is a, is a shadow of God. Union. The son inherits the name of the father, just the way a woman inherits the name of her husband. And we see that Jesus himself referred to the father as the husband, and he is the vine. Woman is a beauty of man. Just the way Jesus is a. Anytime you see a beautiful woman, background woman, you know. And she represents her husband who's God-fearing. Okay, um. I mentioned earlier this morning, I think I'll go to numbers 27 because right now, because of, uh, the plague and because of the men who committed sexual morality with the Moabite woman. They were wiped out, so a, a census had to be changed. Because of their unbelief. And I'm going to, to just read Ephesians, chapter two, verse 11 through 16. Hebrews, chapter three, verse 14 through 18, and Romans, chapter four, verses 13 through 15. And I'm gonna show you the, the value of knowing why Caleb and Joshua entered the, um, promised land. They're the only two, but they are representing the Jew and Gentile. And as a result of Christ's wonderful work on the cross, he brought down the barrier between the Jew and Gentile to make one. So now you have the brother without the law and you have the brother from the law. Had this beautiful promise handed to them through faith. So remember, it's not the works of the Lord that's gonna save you. The works of the law showed us that we are unfaithful and we will fall short every time because fallen nature. And that fallen nature. Is distant from the devil. Why do you think the devil tried so hard to have Jesus bow down to him? Cause if he bowed down to him, he would have taken the fallen nature, just the way Adam and Eve did. That's why. So let's go to, uh. I'm gonna read, uh, I'm just gonna read through the sentence again, this is as ma, so as a result of the plague. They slept with, um, the Moabite woman. They were led astray to worship their false God. And, uh, because of, uh, because of the bravery of, of killing the Midianite. Took God's anger away. And the plague was ended. So let's go back to numbers, chapter 26. And, uh. Spare me one moment. Okay. After the plague, the Lord said to Moses and Eliezer, son of Aaron, the priest. Take a census of the whole Israelite community by families, all those twenty years old or more who are able to serve in the army of Israel. So one of the planes of Moab by the Jordan across from Jericho. Moses and Eliezer, the priest spoke with them and said, take a census of the men twenty years old or more, as the Lord commanded Moses. These were the Israelites who came out of Egypt. The descendants of Reuben, the firstborn son of Israel were through Hannek. The Hannekite clan through Palu, the Paluite clan through Hezron. And so we see that these clans were numbered forty-three thousand seven hundred and thirty. And then we will see again as he. They go over the descendants of Simeon, the descendants of Gad by their clans. And then we go further down the clans of Ishar. And as you can see, these names are the, uh, names of the brothers who. Who put Joseph in a sister. As you can see that the twelve tribes of Israel come from. Jacob L., better known as Israel, cause after wrestling with the angel of the Lord. He was no longer known as Jacob, but known as Israel. The descendants of Ishar, the descendants of Zeblin. The descendants of Manasseh. And then these were the clans of Manasseh, those numbered were fifty-two thousand seven hundred. So as we see the. After the plague purge, they had. And get a sense of the people who left Egypt to come to land. Spare me one moment. And these were the descendants of Joseph. We also say, okay, before that, in verse 37, these were the clans of Ephraim. Those numbered were thirty-two thousand five hundred, and these were the descendants of Joseph by their clans. And then we see the clans of Benjamin, those numbered were forty-five thousand six hundred. And then we see the clans of Asher, they were numbered fifty-three thousand four hundred. The descendants of Naphtali, um, Naphtali by their clans and total number of men of Israel was six hundred and one thousand seven hundred and thirty. And then now we go to, and then in verse 52. The Lord said to Moses, the land is to be allotted to them as an inheritance based on the number of the names. To a lo, a larger inheritance. So that's why they did the census, so they can divide the promised land evenly. And appropriately according to the numbers that they gathered in the census, census of each tribe. So the Lord said to Moses, the land is to be allotted to them as an inheritance based on the number of names. To a larger group, give a larger inheritance, and to a smaller group, a smaller one. Each is to receive its inheritance according to the number of those listed. Be sure that the land is distributed by lot, you know, rolling the dice. What each group inherits will be according to the names for its ancestral tribe. Each inheritance is to be distributed by lot among the larger and smaller groups. These were the Levites who are counted by their clans through Gershon, the Gershonite clan, through Kohath, the Kohathite clan. And through Marai, the Marai clan. And these were also Levi clans. And these were also Levi clans. And all and as you go down, all the male Levites a month old or more numbered twenty-three thousand. They were not counted along the other Israelites because they received no inheritance from them. Why? As we read earl- um early in Ezekiel, that God is their possession. God is their inheritance. These are the ones counted by Moses and Eleazar, the priests, when they counted the Israelites on the plains of Moab by the Jordan cross from Jericho. Not one of them was among those counted by Moses and Aaron, the priest, when they. Counted the Israelites in the desert of Sinai. But the Lord had told those Israelites they would surely die in the wilderness. And not one of them was left except Caleb, son of Jephaniah, and Joshua, son of Nun. Because of unbelief. Humanity, and I'll say this again. And again and again. Humanity is being condemned. For their unbelief. Humanity is in by humanity. Is rebellion against God. But thankfully. God has a remnant portion, a remnant chosen inheritance. So if anybody wants to say that God died for everybody, please stop. We see that Israel again. Is a foreshadow of us. Israel was chosen. Not because of. Their spec- um their spectacular appeal. Stubborn, just like anybody else. The Midianites, the Moabites, the Hittites, Amorites, and Malachites, did God choose them? When you go deeper in your scriptures, you. I goes for the weak and the despised. The rejects. The weak. And the lame. Before I go to uh. Numbers twenty-seven. I'm gonna go to Micah. Leave us Micah, chapter four. The God died for the wise and learned. The strong. We see we see that illustrated. When. King David invited Bathijah, the son of. Jonathan. He had crippled feet. He called him to his table. That's an illustration of. God calling the lame. I'm gonna read this to you. In that day. This is Micah, chapter four, verse six. In that day declares the Lord, I will gather the lame. I will assemble the exiles and those I have brought to grief. I will make the lame my remnant. Those driven away, a strong nation. The Lord will rule over them in Mount Zion from the day, from that day and forever. Before uh I go to numbers, chapter twenty-seven, again. Caleb and Joshua. Were the only ones from the first generation. To enter the promised land. To be given in a lot of inheritance. And I'm gonna show you. Well, this is again a blueprint. Of what is to come and it is as a result of Christ's work, we see it manifested. So don't say, oh. The Jews killed Jesus. God remembers the Israelites. Still to this day. And. The irony of it all is. If you have a Jewish. Believer. It'll be more difficult for him to persuade his Jewish brothers to believe in Yeshua and Hamashiach. They will accept a. Gentile's testimony. I mean, we see that echoed. In the life of Paul, he thought, hey, I'm a Pharisee of Pharisees, I'm a Benjaminite. I know the law to a T. They're gonna listen to me because once they see that I'm changed. And believe that Yeshua is the um. And creator. Seated at the right hand of the Father. They'll believe, you know? Other way around, Paul. He was commissioned to. Proclaim the good news to the Gentiles. Okay, I'm going to go to Ephesians, chapter two, verse eleven. Through sixteen. So we see that. Caleb, think of Caleb, the Gentile, and Joshua, the Jewish. The Jewish man. The Jew. And as a result of Christ's work on the cross, this is the result. Okay, Ephesians, Ephesians. Okay, here we go. Therefore. Remember that formerly you, who are Gentiles by birth. And called uncircumcised by those who call themselves the circumcision. Which is done in the body by human hands. Remember that at that time you were separate from Christ. Excluded from citizenship in Israel and foreigners to the covenants of the promise. Without hope. And without God in the world. But now, this is to the Gentile. But now in Christ Jesus, you who were. You who once were far away have been brought near by the blood of Christ. For he himself is our peace, who has made the two groups one. And has destroyed the barrier. The dividing wall of hostility. By setting aside in his flesh the law with its commands and regulations. His purpose was to create in himself. One new humanity out of the two. Thus making peace and in one body to reconcile both of them to God through cross. So now. The brother without the law. And the brother with the law. Are now one. And they're justified, not by the law. They're justified by faith. In the promise. You see, God sown children of promise. Among the Israelites. And the Gentiles. You gotta understand that. And we see. In Romans, chapter four, verse thirteen. This beautiful promise unfolding. You see, when Abraham was. Received the encounter from God. He was considered righteous based on. Faith. He believed he heard it, he believed what he heard, and he was considered righteous. So some might say, why was the law instituted in the first place? Why didn't, why didn't God just, hey, I'm gonna give you a promise, you believe? This is. Why God did that. The law was instituted to reveal that we have a fallen nature and we can never obey him. We're always faithless. We're unfaithful rotten creatures when it comes to relationship with intimacy. None of us are faithful. I mean, you see that anywhere, corporate businesses. We watch sports, nobody's loyal, everybody's for themselves. You know, if they pay enough money, then he'll say, well. That's not faithfulness. But now. The law was instituted to show our shortcomings, to show that, hey. We need to save you. Our Christ. Died. The death that you and I deserved. To fulfill. The requirement of the law. Which is death. Basically, he. He was sentenced to death. While he was supposed to be sentenced to death. And he took the blows. He even took the blows of being separated from his father. And we see that separation from God's presence. Is hell. Let's go to Romans, chapter four, verse thirteen. And this through fifteen, verses verses thirteen through fifteen. It is written. It was not through the law that Abraham and his. Received the promise that he would be heir of the world. But through the righteousness. That comes. By. Faith. But if those who depend on the law are heirs, faith means nothing. And the promise is worthless. Because the law brings wrath. And where there is no law, there's no transgression. So if you have the Holy. A law against the spirit. The law did not. The Holy Spirit did not transgress against the law. So how could there be a law against you when you're born again with the spirit? So now both Gentiles, Caleb and Jews, Joshua, have the promise of being renewed. And it's on the basis of faith. Not the works of the law. So if someone comes to you, yeah, I really need Paul, I observe the Sabbath, I do this, I have tithes, I do this. Look at me. That ain't gonna get you there. Person who is truly saved will say, hey. I was just doing my thing. And all of a sudden I received an encounter from Jesus, I felt some conviction over what I was doing. And now I sense that God is wooing me, drawing me. Not of my own volition. Not of all the works I did, but when you see that God has called you. You were dead in your sins, you were dead. And when he called you and said, hey. Hey, Michael. Why don't you come work for me and bear fruit for me? Did Matthew call Jesus? Did Peter? Did anybody, when any of those men call him first? Jesus said, follow me. And as is stressed in John, chapter six. No man can come to me. Unless the Father draws him. And that verse right there should encourage you. The one whom God draws to his son is taught by the Father. So that's why we as humans want to encourage everybody. Not to only attend this Bible study. But to learn from true teachers sent from God. Because the moment you. Believe in these teachings and you know that you're being taught by God, you you are in his favor. And obviously, when you're in his favor, he will draw you to his son to save you, and then you'll be. You're called to have an intimate relationship with him. You are set apart from the world. To have an intimate relationship with your high priest. And I dig even deeper. The son will bring you to intimacy with the father. So now. When you're born again, as Scott mentioned, he's not there because of you. He's there because of his son in you. So when he sees. You, he sees his son, who he loves and adores. You're in a reconciled relationship with God through faith. Go try. As mentioned before, go ahead. Go try to impress God and say, yeah. I'll make the first move. I can desire you. I'm better than everybody else. I figured it out, I got this formula, just just say the prayer and I'm saved. Believe in Jesus. We see it over and over again. Paul goes to Lydia, a a businesswoman. In in purple clothing. And when he made, when he act, when he. Proclaimed the good news, a message to her. It says it's written, and I'll I'll read it to you. God opened her heart, not Paul. Not Lydia. God opened her heart. So that's why we encourage people to call out to God, because God, those who call God are called. We encourage people to go and fellowship and listen. Because when we see that we are seeking him diligently, is him really wooing us? As mentioned last week, did Lazarus call out to Jesus? When he was dead? Why did the grave and say, hey, Jesus, I'm looking for you? You're dead spiritually, dead. Just give me a moment there. It is written. In Acts, chapter sixteen. Verse. Thirteen. On the Sabbath, we went outside the city gate to the river, where we expected to find a place of prayer. We sat down and began to speak to the woman who had gathered there. One of those listening was a woman from the city of Lyatira named Lydia, a dealer in purple cloth. She was a worship of God. The Lord. Opened her heart. To respond to Paul's message. And when she and members of her household were baptized, she invited us to her home. Read the Bible. Not for intellectual knowledge. It's to understand him. You see, if you have all intellectual knowledge. That does mean that your heart is in line. In with this knowledge. God has to open your heart. To be in line with these scriptures. Because let me tell you, the devil can quote. Me more than Scott, more than any of us. And he knows it intellectually. But because the truth is not in him. His heart will not be opened like Lydia. And that's why he's doomed to die. To go further. Caleb and Joshua are the only ones from the first generation to enter the promised land. And I'm gonna read to you Hebrews, chapter three, verse fourteen through eighteen. Hebrews, chapter three, verse fourteen through eighteen. This is condemning humanity. Humanity is unnaturally faithful. They're dead. You can tell somebody. You can heal in front of somebody who's dead, just like Jesus, Jesus healed in front of the dead. And they couldn't believe him. They had to see a sign. Oh, you're not the son of God. No matter how many miracles he performed. They're dead. But thanks be to God. He's given us hearts. To believe. Let's go to Hebrews, chapter three, verse fourteen through eighteen. Let's go to Hebrews chapter three verse fourteen to eighteen. It is written. We have come to share in Christ if indeed we hold our original conviction firmly to the very end. As has just been said, today, if you hear his voice. Do not harden your hearts as you did in the rebellion. Who were they who heard and rebelled? Were they not all those Moses led out of Egypt? And with whom was he angry for forty years? Was it not with those who sinned, whose bodies perished in the wilderness? And to whom did God swear that they would never enter his rest if not to those who disobeyed? So we see that they were not able to enter because of their unbelief. Faith is a gift. Grace is a gift. And I'm gonna read about they they fell for their cravings, they wanted quail, they wanted meat, they wanted to stone Moses and Aaron to death because they weren't getting the cravings. Of their flesh. So when we go back to Ephesians chapter two, we read earlier from verse three. All of us also lived among them at one time. Gratifying the cravings of our flesh and found its desires and thoughts. Like the rest, we were by nature deserving of wrath. But because of his great love for us. God, who is rich in mercy, made us alive with Christ, even when we were dead in transgressions. It is by grace you have been saved. And God raised us up with Christ and seated us. With him in the heavenly realms in Christ Jesus, in order that in the coming ages, he might show. The incomparable riches of his grace, expressed in his kindness to us in Christ Jesus. For it is by grace you have been saved through faith, and this is not from yourselves. It is the gift of God. Not by works, so that no one can boast. For we. Are God's handiwork created in Christ Jesus to do good works, which God prepared in advance for us to do, just like he raised up Moses. He raised up Nehemiah to restore the walls. Why? Because Nehemiah is a picture of Christ restoring us broken walls and doors and gates. We make of the body, we make of the temple. So when you see that God has. Touch your soul and hey, wake up, I got work for you to do, you better kiss his feet. It's more than a privilege and more than an honor to be wakened from the dead and to do the will of God. Not of my own volition, but by by God's grace, as it is written here in Ephesians. So don't let anybody tell you. We see that in Romans. Paul struggled with the flesh, Romans chapter seven. His rest, whatever I do. I try to do what's right, but I can't do it, I can't carry it out. Who is gonna deliver me from this body of death? But as a human. To church, go out there, pray, God, go look for him, go be desperate, say, God, I don't know. How would I know? You have your hand in my life. And seek him, go into scriptures, read, pray desperately. Then you'll realize it's God wooing you. Drawing you. That's why we go out there. Cause let me tell you, when people came out to me at first, I didn't wanna listen. But people kept coming to me, people kept coming to me, and people kept coming to me and coming to me. Why? Because as a. That's how he finds the lost sheep, through people. So there's ninety-nine sheep here. And when he's looking for his lost sheep. We gotta pray for those who are lost, we can't just look down on them when they or be be condescending to them. Cause we know we don't deserve it. And then when we grow in Christ, we we've learned to even pray for those who've wounded us. Just like he did. And I I I learned, like, man, I remember early in my faith, I received grace, I received mercy, and I was like, oh, yeah. Thank you for being merciful to me. And God said, okay, all right, you wanna become like me? Yeah, yeah, worship you, yeah, I wanna be like you. Now you gotta know, gotta have a little taste. Of being wounded. See. You wound, you wounded me. All of our sins, you wounded me. You hurt me, I was crucified, was crushed to healing. So now when you, now it's the other way around, flip the coin. Then people sitting against you, what are you gonna do with my mercy? Are are you gonna elect interest on that mercy? Or you are you gonna say? I owe me five bucks. Stay in prison till you pay the last penny. Or you gonna say, have mercy on them, Father, they wounded me, they hurt me. Have mercy on them. For they do not know what they do. They're dead. Very difficult walk. But. In this walk, as we deny the flesh, as God by the power of his Holy Spirit in us. We will deny this flesh, this flesh will be crucified and will be wounded. Just the way Christ was, not to the point where we shed blood to save others. But we have to have a taste. Just like Abraham was commanded to. Sacrifice his one and only son. And once he, once that test was passed. God was showing him how he had to share in his suffering. He wanted Abraham to know what it felt like to sacrifice his one and only son, who was never separate from him. So you wanna be like Christ, you wanna do God's will? Gotta share in the sufferings here. There's no glory. If you do not share or taste. The cup that he drank, and that cup I'm talking about is suffering, persecution, ridicule. People excluding you. You're a bigot, you're a hater. Cause you speak the truth. Let's go to Numbers chapter twenty-seven, I'll read through it and then we'll come to a close. The daughters of. Zello, Fehad, son of Hefah. The son of Gilead, the son of Maker, the son of Manasseh. Belonged to the clans of Manasseh, son of Joseph. The names of the daughters were Mala, Noah, Hagla, Milcah, and Terzah. They came forward and stood before Moses, Eleazar, the priests, the leaders and the whole assembly at the entrance of the tented meeting. And said, our father died in the wilderness, he was not among Korah's followers. Who banded together against the Lord. But he died for his own sin and left no sons. Why should our father's name disappear from this clan because he had no son? Give us property among our fathers' relatives. So Moses brought their case before the Lord, and the Lord said to him. What Zella Fehad's daughters were saying is right. You must certainly give them property as an inheritance among their fathers' relatives and give their fathers' inheritance to them. Say to the Israelites, if a man dies and leaves no son, give his inheritance to his daughter. If he has no daughter, gives inheritance to his brothers. If he has no brothers, give his inheritance to his father's brothers. And if his father had no brothers, give his inheritance to nearest relative in his clan, that he may possess it. This is to have the force of the law for the Israelites, as the Lord commanded Moses. So anybody who is in that dilemma, they can receive the lauded inheritance. Of the promised land. Said to Moses, go up this mountain in Abaram range and see the land I have given the Israelites. After you have seen it, you too will be gathered to your people as your brother Aaron was. For when the community rebelled at the waters in the desert of Zen, both you. Both of you disobeyed my command to honor me as holy before their eyes. And it's got, uh, Brother Scott, uh, clearly explained. When they struck the rock. It was. It was a prediction of Christ being pierced. And you saw the water and blood come out of him, he's a rock. So you see like these a lot of subliminals, a lot of foreshadows. So they were supposed to speak to the rock. And now Aaron and Moses will not go into the promised land because of their disobedience. So Moses said to the Lord, may the Lord, the God who gives breath to all living things, appoint someone over this community. To go out and come in before them. One who will lead them out and bring them in, so the Lord's people will not be like sheep without a shepherd. So the Lord said to Moses, take Joshua, son of Nun, a man in whom is the spirit. Who is the spirit of leadership and lay your hand on him. Have him stand before Eleazar, the priest, and the entire assembly, and commission him in their presence. Give him some of your authority, so the whole Israelite community will obey him. He is to stand before Eleazar, the priest, who will obtain decisions for him by inquiring of the Yerem before the Lord. At this command, he and the entire community of the Israelites will go out, and at his command, they will come in. Moses did as the Lord commanded him, he took Joshua and had him stand before Eleazar, the priest, and the whole assembly. Then he laid his hands on him and commissioned him as the Lord instructed through Moses. So there we go. I'm gonna put this last though, commission. You see, when God has chosen you. You are on a commission. You're looking for the lost treasured. Children of God, they're buried out there. It could be a prostitute, drug dealer, could be a president, could be a senator. Could be a CEO, could be a maid, could be an actress. We're there. On to be commissioned, and I'm gonna read Matthew chapter eleven, I mean, chapter twenty-eight. Verse eighteen through nineteen. So when you say, don't think you're just gonna sit around and have all this information for yourself. You are out there to do work. The harvest is ready, the harvest is the people, the fields and the building, yes, people. And we are out there. We're commissioned to reap. So if someone says, hey, God loves you, no. I want you to know about God, he sends his own his boy God and said, I don't wanna hear that. Go. You don't force people. Because God knows. Where to lead you. So I'm gonna read to you the commission. Then Jesus came to them and said, all authority in heaven and on earth has been has been given to me. Therefore, go and make disciples of all nations. Baptizing them in the name of the Father. And of the Son. And of the Holy Spirit. And teaching them to obey everything I have commanded you. And surely I'm with you always to the very end of age. Beautiful. So. As I close. You may think I'm kinda shy, people gonna think I'm crazy. But be like that. That woman at the the well. The Samaritan. Who had five husbands. And a sixth man she was second with. And she went down there and told everybody about Jesus. And as we see, even in Proverbs chapter twenty-three. An awayward woman is a narrow pit. A well. And Jesus went to a well. To show that she was, yeah, she is a wayward woman. Now because of mercy. He commissioned her. And many Samaritans. Because of her witness believed. Here's a man who told me everything about me. When you're commissioned. Go out there. Supermarkets. Go out there in the park. Be a witness. And you don't have to just quote scriptures when when you know the Holy Spirit is with you and inside of you. You strike up a conversation. You talk with them. Sometimes they see it through your actions, they see there's something different about you. And then you can. Welcome them and say, hey. Well. God is changing me. Strike up a conversation. And tell them why you are like that woman at the well. He told me everything, I was, he said, people. Hey, don't say, I'm going back to my my testimony. And when I I saw that God. Gave me those encounters. I just, it it was like I I had to go tell people about him. And then he will teach you. Teach you to pray to him. And it's not transactional, it's to say. I I wanna communicate with you, I I I want to be intimate with you, what are you thinking about? Oh, let me go through the scriptures and you can hear his voice. He'll give you revelation, he'll reassure you that, hey. In this world, you'll have trouble. But take heart, I've overcome the world. I'm with you to the very end of age. That's why we encourage people to read the Bible. It's not to look at it from cover to cover, you're gonna take a journey with the Holy Spirit, and he's gonna reveal. The King's love for you. Through Tommy words, people say confirmations. He makes his presence known through his word. The word and spirit walk hand in hand. So beloved, if you have any questions. Any concerns? Any pleas, any prayers? Please come to the table and don't be shy. No, we've been there. But now we express to you our confidence. And our sake.
Thank you, Brother London. Beloved, as London. Uh, just beautifully made the invitation, are there any questions, comments, concerns? Or if there's anyone. That has um. Any um. That would love for us to uh pray for any family member. Uh, family members, relatives. Concerns. Once again, are there any questions, comments, concerns? Or if anyone um has any loved ones? Family members, relatives, concerns? That. You would like for us to pray over? Okay, while y'all are going over that. Just like to um say in conclusion. From tonight's study, we get a very. What you would say perplexing dichotomy. Uh, dichotomy is two completely opposing ideas or thing. And they are first, God tells Balaam not to go with Balak. Then he tells Balaam to go with Balak. But beloved, this is no contradiction at all. This is no contradiction at all. The reason why. Is because unless. And let's just examine that life really quickly, a little closely. God tells Adam and Eve, as well as the rest of mankind, not. God tells Adam and Eve, as well as the rest of mankind, not to sin. And then he stands back and let them live out their desire, a granting of permission, as it were. He does this that you and I may have our full will exercised. That when he judges us in the end, we will receive a fair and equitable judgment. A judgment where he told us not to do it. But we have the allowance and the complete following of our own heart. To not do it, to actually not do it, or to do it. Now, if you desire to do what you desire to do, after God has put limits on you, then you have the freedom to go against him or come on his side. He will grant you permission to do either. And this is played out in life. As we are warned by God, encouraged by God. We're either supported by God or destroyed by God. Beloved, as Brother London beautifully, and I mean, he beautifully brought out. Starting in Exodus. We see God called out who from where. He called out the children of Israel from Egypt. He didn't call Egyptians, he didn't call Amalekites, he didn't call Canaanites. He didn't call Amorites, he called Israelites. Today, and there are a lot of people. And I'm very surprised and very shocked and very disappointed that they do not. This is almost like speaking with a double tongue. When persons say. That they are believer, but they're not a Christian. Or they don't wanna be called Christians, Christians simply means a follower of the Lord Jesus Christ. So now, understand, there are Christians that leave a very bad taste. In the world's mouths, again, going back to my days of being a driver, a driver. I'm almost laughing as I'm saying it. But I picked up, um. It was a group of people, I picked them up from a church. And I'm listening to them conversate, and one saying, oh, did you see or hear brother so-and-so? Someone else said, they better be glad I'm a Christian, because if I wasn't, I would've gave him a piece of my mind. And I just hear them going on and just, I mean, just going on, I just picked them up from church, mind you, I just picked them up from church. And I said to them, yo, wait, wait. What y'all are doing is totally wrong. Now, what if I was an unbeliever? You know y'all would've shot me down because of the 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 way you're speaking and the way you're talking? I said, y'all ought not to be doing this. Y'all ought not to be doing this. Because you're giving a very bad testimony of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. So I can readily understand why persons hesitate to be called a Christian, let me tell you something. Y'all can call Scott Kendall Foster Senior a Christian, Christian, Christian. I will proudly wear my father's name, proudly, because I am a Christian. Now, like I told somebody, don't just say that you're a believer and leave it there, because the demons got something over you. That you, well, I won't say never have, but you don't have right now, the demons, they believe, and they got proof for their belief. Because they dwelt in 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 the, in the time period uh from the past. They dwelt in the presence of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. So when they say their belief, their belief is more founded than yours, but can you call a demon a Christian? Absolutely not. So don't just go by the title of being a believer. Because then you have to ask, well, what do you and who do you believe? When you come at the Chris, at the title as a Christian, we know that you're believing and walking in the words and the steps of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. And do it proudly. Do it proudly, yes, there are those that Jesus, Jesus will address these ones, as brought out in Matthew chapters five and seven. Get away from me, I never knew you, he's not talking to a Muslim. Remember, beloved, as we're in Numbers, and and London just read tonight. Phineas, he took a sword and drove it through who? An Israelite. And who is the Israelite? What did God say about Israel? He said, my son. So because Phineas was so zealous for the, for, for the, the purity of God's camp. He killed one of his own. And God allowed him, and God supported him, and God backed him in that. Do you think that Phineas went away from there saying, don't call me an Israelite? No. Moses, Aaron, do you think they went away from the camp saying, don't call me an Israelite? No. God will deal with those face false Christians, cause you know what, they're really not Christians. But be proud to be called a servant of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Proudly wear their name, proudly, uh, 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 be ready to be identified with them. And you show the world what a Christian is really supposed to be. You show the world what a Christian is really, really supposed to be. So beloved, as we come to, once again, our close for tonight's study, I think, I personally think. Y'all are probably saying, Brother Scott, dude. First you say you like it, then you say you love it, then you say you love it, and then you say you like it, yes. Each study that we 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 embark upon, I love. And I know I sound like a stuck needle, but again, I bless God because he told me, Scott, don't sin. Then he turns around and he says, Scott, sin. Wait, what? Like my daughter go, wait, what? I told you not to sin. But since you persist on it, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. Our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ says, I will forewarn you, whom you fear, fear him who has the power to cast you into hell. So since you don't wanna stop. I want you to go to full nine, God says in Genesis, the the sin of the Amorites are not yet full. God is telling them, leave them alone, don't, don't, don't harm them, don't harm the Amorites, cause they ain't finished sinning the full nine. I want them to sin, so that when my judgment is read to them at the day of judgment. They will be rightly charged for the sin that they refuse to come out of. Beloved, before we close in prayer, once again, is this, are not is, are there any questions, comments, concerns? Okay, beloved, so without further ado, we're gonna close in prayer. And my, as well as y'all's precious little one, she wants to bring our close, our, our study to uh, uh, close in prayer, and that's Gigi. So Vuba, with that big booming girl voice, bring tonight's prayer to uh, Bible study to a close.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We bless my family, I this day's day, and thank you for all the blessings that we have. And please forgive each and one of us if we're in our shortcomings, and please watch over Brother Paul's mother. And please watch over Sister Margaret's mother and keep them safe. And keep us all safe at the sleep tonight, and please keep us safe as we're going out tomorrow. Thank you for allowing us to have a wonderful Bible study this evening. And please let us have many more wonderful Bible studies in the future, and thank you for allowing us to start this Bible study. As a journey, and thank you for all the people that would be, that were able to attend tonight. In Jesus Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Beloved, as always, and Brother London reminded me. Please tune in next week to the same bat station, to the same bat channel, at the same bat time. From the Mason household and the Foster household, to all of y'all's households, may God richly bless you. And I bid you all a lovely, lovely, good night.
Journey.
Good night, everyone.
Continues.
Good night, y'all.
Alrighty now.